For those that don't know, we did the Plano Forum last night and there were 33 candidates. You're spared that painful experience. We have fewer candidates tonight. So we're going to have the opportunity to ask some of you questions to you gentlemen. So five questions. This is our format. You have two minutes for an opening statement, one and a half minutes per question, and you'll have a two-minute closing statement. I know you're not running against each other, but in different places, so the floor's going to be yours. And so five questions, and then we're going to do something a little unique. We're going to have a short lightning round. What that lightning round is, Mr. Collins has seen those before, it's going to be a yes, no, or pass question. If you say anything other than yes, no, or pass, we'll cut you off. It's not meant to be a got-you question, but they're straightforward questions for you literally to say a yes, no, or you know, you can choose to pass the question. And then folks that have questions because they didn't like you passing, they can come talk to you after the forum. With that, Mr. Harden, we'll start with you on your opening statement. Two minutes.
Hello? Okay. Good evening. I'm Andy Harden, and I want to say a couple of quick words to you, I guess, as we get started. You know, as taxpayers in Collin County, you should be very proud of Collin College. It belongs to you. You paid for it, and I know that you want to make sure that what you've built stays in good shape. I'm Andy Harden. I'm running for reelection for the Collin College Place Nine on the Board. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. As Derek said, we were in Plano last night. Bob and I have a bus, and we go from town to town and see anybody that will see us. You know, in Collin College, we have, if you have a student, we have dual enrollment. And that is an incredible benefit for families in Collin County, so that you can receive credit for college while you're going to high school. After graduation, if you go to Collin College, you'll benefit from going to the lowest tuition college that's owned by a public institution in the state of Texas. We're very proud of that. But it's not just a low price. We are incredible value for those people. I'm going to cut off my comments because I'm sure I'll get to make these other points in the question portion, but I'll tell you a little bit about myself later. Thank you very much.
I'm Bob Collins, and I'm a candidate for reelection to the Place Eight position on the Collin College Board of Trustees. My prior experience includes Plano City Council, Mayor Pro Tem there, members of the Board of the, a member of the Board of the Collin County Appraisal District, involved in, most recently, in the Economic Recovery Task Force that the county judge named for Collin County. That was last year. But more importantly, I've been involved with Collin College since 1985. That's the year we formed the college. And so it's been a great experience for me to do that. My educational experience is, I have a PhD in engineering and an MBA. My previous corporate experience was with a Fortune 500 defense electronics company in Dallas where I was a corporate officer and vice president for strategy for them. I have a passion for higher education, and I just, not only just education by itself, but education throughout Collin County. My desire is to have higher education, quality higher education, easily available for every student in Collin County. Accessibility is a big deal for me, for students to get higher education. The points Andy made about the cost are something we really wrestle with. And we work hard to keep our tax rates down. We work hard to keep our tuition costs down. We work hard to do all of those things with the college, and at the same time, make it an excellent education for anybody who wants to get it. We want to make it accessible for everybody. I'm going to stop right there because I think I'm getting close.
Well done. We'll start with you, Mr. Collins, and question one. And we're going to start with a softball. They'll get a little bit harder. What's the greatest challenge you think faces the college right now, and what do you intend to do to address that?
The biggest challenge right now is coming out of the pandemic successfully, which we're probably going to start doing here pretty quickly. We've had a difficult year with the college from a pandemic standpoint. We've managed to keep it open and going. We have actually increased our enrollment a little bit. If you look at the, our relation, our comparison to other community colleges in the area, in the state, we've done very well with our enrollment. So the biggest issue right now is coming back into a normal mode of operation for the college.
Thank you. And Mr. Harden, and these are one and a half minutes. The question is, what's the greatest challenge facing the college? What do you intend to do to address that?
Well, Bob mentioned a great, or a big problem. To me, what I really look at, I think Collin College is in a great position right now. When you look at whatever you're judging, I think Collin College is a great college. To me, the biggest challenge to us, I don't consider it a problem, I think the biggest challenge is, how do we keep pace with where we are as Collin County continues to grow? Y'all probably know Collin County is growing a lot, and so we now have almost 60,000 students. Collin College is not a small entity. And so to me, the biggest challenge we have is, how do we continue to handle that growth and provide the same quality education we have? We have opened two new campuses last fall. We've got two more campuses that are going to open in next year. And so we're trying to provide the best education we can for Collin County residents at the best price available.
Thank you very much. We've asked a similar question in the past. This next is going to come to you, Mr. Harden. And I've been accused of asking questions that are more Republican or conservative slanted. Now, this event's hosted by Republican clubs, but I would note that this is more focused on Constitution and liberty, specifically First Amendment. This is a national issue that continues to go on. So the second question is, how would you define free speech zones? Are they needed in colleges today? And how would that impact your decision-making at the college?
Is this one for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Free speech zones, you kind of hear free speech zones more at four-year colleges, and if you don't know what that is, it's an issue that's developed about having the ability to go to a college and speak your mind, if you will. It has not been an issue at Collin College, but I would define free speech as what you think and say. We try not to inhibit anybody. We don't really want hate speech or anything, anybody being impolite in the classrooms or on the campuses. So right now, free speech zones is not an issue really. I think that we've had an issue with at Collin College.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
I think I agree with Andy. Is that sufficient?
Yes, but I'm-
No. I think I don't agree with all Andy said, but we won't argue about that. The, which is normal, yeah. The free speech zone for Collin College, I agree with Andy, we've not had that issue. But if you wanted to name one, it's our campus is a free speech zone. Every campus is a free speech zone. We believe in academic freedom and freedom of speech, so there's no issue there for us. And I also agree with Andy, a lot of those free speech zone issues have come up in four-year universities or four-year colleges. Not, but it hasn't come up that we're aware of, at least at Collin College.
Thank you. So we're going to do an audible. Maybe this is, this either is or is not the reason they choose me to moderate these things, but something you said, Mr. Harden, was interesting. You used the phrase hate speech. And of course, that's a nebulous and non-defining legal term. So the nature of, can you talk a little bit about what you, how you define hate speech, and if it's offensive to someone else, would that ever be something that is in the policy for the college?
Well, when I throw out hate speech, it's a, it's a term that's thrown around now, and honestly, it's not my term. I look at hate speech, it's just anything that's insulting to somebody. You know, I was raised, you try to be nice to everybody, the golden rule. And so that's kind of how I live my life. And so I really don't get boxed in with terms like hate speech or anything like that, because it's not an issue that I really spend a lot of time on.
Mr. Collins?
So I would ask you, Derek, what is hate speech?
So I'll clarify, and I think this is useful for the audience. The nature of hate speech, if you think hate speech should not be said, then you're essentially saying you have free speech zones. So what we're trying to elicit is, do you believe there's a such thing as legal hate speech? Because I could say some very offensive things to you right now, but they shouldn't be illegal. Is there ever an instance where you would deem hate speech, something that's offensive to someone else, not allowed on the campus? That's a more specific question for you.
The, I struggle with what your real definition of hate speech is, or what anybody's real definition is.
Well, that's the point. There's no definition. So please share what yours is.
So, so I, I'm totally committed to freedom of speech. And if you remember back in elementary school, when people were really talking hateful to one another, a lot of times you just got settled on the playground. So in the course of freedom of speech and freedom of thought, the higher thought's going to prevail, I believe always. The better thought's going to always prevail. So we don't, we don't, we're not going to have free speech zones, and we're not going to try to carve out legal definitions of what is hate speech, what is not hate speech. We're going to try to emphasize civil speech, civility on the campus, but we're not going to try to limit thought and limit people being able to express their opinions.
Thank you. Mr. Harden?
Can I answer that question? You want some more?
Well, to that, I asked a specific question at the end. I can repeat it, and again, these are on the fly, but what we're trying to determine is, would there be any instance where hate speech, that phrase that you used, hate speech, would be prohibited on campus, and you would ever institute free speech zones?
You know, I don't really use the terms ever, never, or any of those things. So if you want to give me an example, I'll tell you what to think. But I'm never going to say, never do anything, because there may be a set of circumstances that at some point in time I look at, and we need to do something. I don't know.
Thank you. For the record, I will never beat my wife. Question three, this is going to go to Mr. Collins, and this is a more specific question. This is also a national issue we've been dealing with, right here in Collin and Tarrant Counties. What is and should be the policy regarding self-identified transgender students, use of bathrooms, shower facilities, and sports participation at the college? I can repeat it if you like?
Yeah, say it a little bit slower.
Yes, sir. What is and should be the policy regarding self-identified transgender students, use of bathrooms, shower facilities, and sports participation at the college?
Personal opinion is that we're not going to change what we're doing right now, which is, men go to the men's restroom, women go to the women's restroom. Same way, same way- same way with dressing rooms for sports and those sorts of things. So on my watch, that's not going to change. It's going to stay, it's going to stay the same. That is not an issue for us right now. The one issue we have had is that the LGBTQ community wants us to carve out accommodation for them specifically in our policy, in our nondiscrimination policy. And we're not going to do that either. Our current nondiscrimination policy covers every class of citizen. If we have to carve out one class of citizen, or one class of people for special treatment on discrimination, then where do we stop? When, for instance, if I put LGBTQ- if I carve out LGBTQ for our nondiscrimination policy, and by the way, we've had the lawyers look at it twice, our nondiscrimination policy meets all the requirements of both Title VII and Title IX of the Civil Rights Act. So if I carve out one group of people, then when does it stop? Navajo Indians probably have a cause to fuss about too, so we could carve them out as well. So it doesn't stop. So I carve out one group here, one group there, and it doesn't stop. So we're going to leave it just like it is.
Thank you. Mr. Harden, I can repeat it if you like.
No, it's pretty, you know, I have basic answers. We're going to follow the law. There's already laws on the books about what you can and can't do, and that's what we're going to do. We're not going to try to legislate and make laws, or I don't want to legislate or make laws for Collin College. We're going to follow whatever the laws are passed by the federal government and the state government, and do what we're already doing right now.
Thank you. Question four, I don't want to step on any applause, so you can certainly applause their answers. Question four, this goes to Mr. Harden. How can college financing, and I understand this is not as impactful to, Collin College is perhaps a four-year college, but it still makes an impact. So how can college financing be made simpler so that the average taxpayer can hold the district accountable for the dollars provided from funding sources? What changes are needed for each funding entity? So again, I'll repeat that. How can college financing-
Derek, move slower.
Yes. How can college financing be made simpler so that the average taxpayer can hold the district or the college accountable for the dollars provided from funding sources, and what changes are needed?
When you say college financing, you're talking about our budget?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Collin College is very transparent in what we do, and that's by design. And so I think our financing is pretty straightforward. We have our budget, and we do that, pass that in an open meeting. And so you can see a lot of things online about what we spend our money on, our bid reports each, each meeting, and who's bid on things, and how we award our bids. And so I'm very comfortable that our finances at Collin College are well-respected and very well-done, so that they're all legal. I don't have any concerns with our finances at Collin College.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
I agree with Andy. Our finances are all open. Everybody can check and see what we're doing with the money. But remember, we've already said this once, I'll say it again, we have the lowest tax rate in the state and the lowest, lowest tuition rate in the state as well. Students can go to Collin College and save themselves literally thousands of dollars over a four-year university. All of our, all of our spending is public, is open to the public to look at anytime they want to. Our revenues that we get consist of revenues from the taxpayer, as well as revenues from our students who pay tuition, and some revenue from the state. So that's, I don't know what else to say about that.
Thank you. Sometimes the questions are easier than others. That's fine. The fifth one, this goes to Mr. Collins. How much influence should the board have on curriculum for the college and what the professors teach? How much influence should the board have on curriculum?
Right now, we don't fool with curriculum very much, and I'm not sure that we need to do that. If you've got a, between our accrediting agencies and the State Board of Higher Education, Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, we pretty well know what we have to offer in our courses and our majors. We know which courses go into a major, how many hours you got to take, all those kinds of things. So the board really doesn't deal much with what goes into a course, the course content. Now, I suppose if you wanted to, you could do this as a private citizen. You can look and see what the syllabi are for each course. The syllabi are, the learning objectives are expressed in the syllabi. Each professor has to design his own syllabus for his course, but those learning objectives are common across courses within a certain major. So I'm not really sure that we should have much more role in what we're doing right now.
Thank you. Mr. Harden?
I'd probably like to have more than we have. You know, the academic community is, especially higher education, really likes their freedom. And we like to have freedoms too. They really don't want the board, or staff, or pretty much anybody telling them what to do. And so that is a, it is something that's always for discussion, but the, you don't want me picking the English textbooks, or the history textbooks, or that kind of stuff. We hire people that know what they're doing, that are, have doctorates in those disciplines. And so they do a great job. Also, I can tell you, and the Higher Education Board in Austin provides direction, if you will. Direction's probably a nice word for it. But they tell us what we can and can't do. What Bob and I have worked hard for is doing some things so that you take a course at Collin College, it can transfer someplace else. The, and that's had to be something that we've had to force them to do, so that the numbers are the same. Because the four-year colleges didn't always allow as much transfer as possible. But that's a, that's a longer discussion for another time. But like Bob said, I'm not really interested in starting writing the curriculum.
Awesome. What we're going to do next is a very quick lightning round, and you're going to have a closing statements. I believe Mr. Harden started, so Mr. Collins, you're going to have the first closing statement. Three lightning round questions. What this is, is they're three, I believe, straightforward questions. Unfortunately, two of them use the word ever, so you'll have to deal with that. And just consider these conversation starters for after the forum. And what we're going to do, I'm going to read the question. Mr. Harden and Mr. Collins, if you just ask, answer the question. And that would be yes, no, or pass, if you like. And you know how this works. Any additional attempt at explanation, we want to discourage. So we're going to do the clicker. So question one, Mr. Harden and then Mr. Collins. Question one is, would you ever support designating free speech zones on the campus? Would you ever support designating free speech zones on the campus?
Andy's first, right?
Yes, Mr. Harden.
I'm going to pass-
Yes, sir.
Because that definition is a problem.
Pass. Yes, sir. Pass. Yes, sir. Thank you.
No.
Second question, would you ever support a budget increase of over 3.5%? That's the state trigger. Would you ever support a budget increase of over 3.5% over the state trigger?
Me first?
Yes, sir.
I don't think so.
I'm going to pass on that one.
Okay. And then, just to be fair, Mr. Collins, why don't you go first on this one? Do you support the right of professors, teachers and professors, to voluntarily be trained and armed on campus? Do you support the right of professors and teachers to voluntarily be trained and armed on campus? I know what the law is, just want your position on this.
My position would be yes. Now, there's some explanation to go with it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, not intended to be a got-you question, so I'm sure they'd love to chat with you if you wanted to explain any of those answers further. And with that, Mr. Collins, a two-minute closing, and then Mr. Harden will finish this out with his two minutes.
Well, let me continue with where I left off a moment ago. I really believe that we need to create strategic plans and work to those plans, and that's what we've always done as a college. I still remember our very first master plan that we put together. And by the way, I've got to watch my terminology, because a strategic plan is a little bit different in some people's mind than a master plan. Our first master plan, we identified three locations for campuses. We had three circles, and the middle of each circle was Plano, and the next circle was McKinney, and the next circle was Frisco. And let me tell you something, for those of you who haven't been here very long, Frisco was really, really small at that point in time. And we had, we had some trouble with the folks in Plano about identifying a piece of land in Frisco to be a college campus. So we identified those three, and then we, even though Plano was by far the largest city in the county at that time, we selected McKinney as our first campus. And the reason why we did that was, we wanted to be known as a Collin County College, not a Plano College. And later on in our issues with Frisco, Plano had to feed a bond issue to fund our Frisco campus because they wanted to locate the campus south of 121. We said, no, we're going to locate it north of 121. And we said, we'll fund it some other way. I'll never forget, I had a friend of mine call me really angry. He said, you guys, we voted down that bond issue to fund, to have the college in Frisco. I said, no, that's not what you voted down. What you voted down was how we're going to fund it. We'd already decided we're going to have the college in Frisco. And that's what we did. So we figured out another way to fund it. We developed the college, and you've seen it now. It's surrounded by development all the way. The other thing I would just say is that, over the years, I've really had a great interest in how we provide accessibility, how we reach out in the county. We still have some work to do. We opened two new campuses last year. We have two campuses under construction. We've got another one, at least one more to do. Thank you very much. Vote for Bob Collins, by the way.
Mr. Harden?
Well, again, I just want to thank, thank y'all for allowing us to come tonight. Bob and I don't have this big a crowd usually when we have our monthly board meetings. And so it's kind of nice to see some people in the audience. I will tell you that, two things I want to say, ever, never, and always are words that are hotspots for me, because there's, there's always an exception. And so if you have a problem with any questions, we'd be happy to visit with you about it. Collin College is a wonderful institution. It's great for the citizens of Collin County, because we, it is incredibly good opportunity for individuals that need more education or want more education to be able to receive it at such a value. One of the things, in the good old days, when we had groups together, my favorite day was college graduation, and we would have it in the Allen Convention Center. And I don't know how many things, how many people that thinks seats, probably 15,000 or some amount. But you'd have these students come across the stage, and they're getting two-year degrees. They're not getting four-year degrees from Harvard, but they're the first person in their family that's graduated. And everybody in there is just cheering and excited. It is, going to college and getting education is a remarkable thing for an individual to get. And it's so gratifying to be part of an institution that does that. Thank y'all so very much for having us. I'm in Place Nine, been on nine and a half, nine and a half, almost nine years, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Frisco City Council Place One candidates join us, and I believe we have place cards for them. So those candidates are JP- Scatty. Excellent. Thank you so much. And John Keating. Oh, wait, Mr. Keating decided not to show up tonight. So yes, I'm not beyond shaming candidates for not showing up when we invite them two months in advance. I'm sorry. Did I say that out loud? So JP, thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks. Kind of feel, it's kind of special. It's like I'm performing an act or a comedy tour or anything. It's all me.
Awesome. Now, that still doesn't mean you're not going to have difficult questions, but we appreciate you being here. You know, our format, two minutes opening, one and a half minute per question, a two-minute close. And we have time, so I have six questions and maybe a seventh that we'll add. So we'd love to have you make a two-minute opening statement.
Well, thank you first off for inviting me. And I can only speak for me as a candidate in my campaign, and that's my focus. So for last nine years, John Keating has had the opportunity to serve on City Council, and I feel like it's time for a fresh voice for Frisco. And- and it has to do with where we go as a city from here. I'm a little bit younger. I'm 39 years old, a little bit of the younger generation, but also the future of Frisco. And we're pretty much 75 to 80% built out. And because of that, you know, I have great concern of where we're headed. So every piece of land that we try to develop, there has to be a specific purpose by it. So some of the key principles that I want to make sure that we establish on the City Council is be prepared for the next emergency. I can't tell you what kind of year this has been for each one of us, as far as the winter and also COVID. So I want to make sure that we're fiscally responsible and prepared for the future as far as our reserves. Another point I'd like to talk about is how we can look at the 21st century as far as transportation. We look at the exponential growth of Collin County and the city of Frisco, and I feel like we just sit there and don't do anything about it and expect things to change. Now, I know that may scare some people as far as financing, because you voted down the DART proposition many years ago. But we have to have at least a serious conversation about mass transit, about better connectivity in the city. And for me, as a cyclist, I think there's a lot of opportunities for these corporate businesses that are located in Frisco nearby for cyclists to travel and be around. And most importantly, I think that we are a city that is welcoming because of the exponential growth, but make sure that you, as the citizens, don't feel lost. So communication is one of my key components, being a former journalist myself. So my goal is to be a City Councilman and communicates with people. So thank you.
Well, time. Question one, this is a bit of a softball, but we'll add a little- Question one, this is a bit of a softball, but we'll add a little bit to it. What's the greatest need for your city, and how would you address it? You can certainly address perhaps what your opponent has done or not done in this issue. What's the greatest need for your city and how would you address it?
Well, obviously, the greatest focus is what we can do in the future. I'm not going to talk about, John Keating runs his campaign, I run my campaign, and that's how I like it. That's probably the old car salesman in me to say, if you want to know about a Ford, don't talk to a Chevy dealer, and if you want to talk about a Chevy, don't talk to a Ford dealer. So, I'll focus on what I can do for you as a resident of Frisco. I'm going to go back to, and there's a number of issues, so to pick one is picking like your favorite child or your favorite finger. You have 10 fingers. But for me, as a resident, if I look at the future of Collin County and the future of Frisco, we need to have a plan in place to how we're going to progress as far as our growth, which the growth and development, everything falls under that as far as development, as far as adding additional green space, making our transportation systems viable. Preston Road before the pandemic was the most heavily traveled road in the entire city. Over 60,000 cars traveled throughout that road every day, and it's a state highway, and that complicates things even more. So, what are we going to do to address that problem? You know, we have three options, real simple. We can continue to use the tollway system, and if you as a voter are okay with that, that's fine, but we at least have to talk about it. Or do we look at mass transit, or do we look at private, part, private-public partnerships to help fund and give citizens more options?
You're a master at finishing just seconds before she clicks you. Well done.
I'm watching her, like a hawk.
Question two, what is your stance regarding the city's role in promoting and/or supporting affordable housing?
So, I have a unique perspective on this because I am a renter, and so I don't have that ownership. And my parents, who actually moved to Frisco as well, are renters as well. And for me, as a single guy looking for a home in Frisco for under $300,000 is like finding a needle in a haystack. However, I've made a conscious decision, I'll tell you, I work in Irving, but I've made a conscious decision to live in Frisco and obviously run for the seat, knowing that I may not be able to afford the housing. I've made that choice to rent here in Frisco because of the amenities that are offered, the education, the, of its citizens, the diversity of its citizens. However, and I'll say that to that extent, if I would look at one place that could be an area that we could have affordable housing, it would be downtown, downtown Frisco. And when I say affordable, I'm not talking about government subsidized or anything like that. What I am talking about is starter homes, those are smaller homes, a lot of them, where smaller families or single residents can get their start, and they can also apply for community development block grants that can help renovate those homes and increase the value. But what I will not do, and I've thought about this a long time, is not support the concept of subsidizing the housing that government would want us to have. You're not going to get me.
All right. Question three, do you support the authority of the city to expend public funds to lobby the legislature?
Yes, I do, and here's why. So, the state, it's easy being a state legislature, in my opinion, and here's why. Because we have all these different state legislatures, and they make the state laws, and they can pat themselves on the back because they are saying that we're going to be conservative in our expenditures, we're going to lower our property taxes, we are going to put caps on our property taxes. And with that said, so from legislation from 2019, and that's good and all, but for the city and the cities, I met with all the different departments and talked to them, and I can guarantee you the almost continual thing that comes up with city departments. Remember, we have 1,600 employees, and probably half of them can't even afford to live in Frisco. But my point is this, the state has patted themselves on the back, and that's fine, but it's really strangleholed the city and the department heads and the employees on what they're able to do. So, to me, I support that concept because we need to lobby our state legislators to give us at the local level a little more freedom, a little more control in how we can make our city viable and properly funded.
All right. Question four, I think I'm going to insert a question here, if you, you guys would entertain me. You said something in your last statement about the legislature placing caps. There actually are no caps on property taxes in Texas, they're triggers.
Triggers, excuse me, that's correct. I come from Indiana, by the way, Mike Pence says hi too.
Okay, so.
I covered him when he was governor, as a journalist.
Yes. Well, question four is, would you commit to opposing any proposed budget that is above the effective tax rate plus inflation? So, this is very purposeful, and you know what the trigger is. Would you commit to opposing any proposed budget that is above the effective tax rate plus inflation? And what are your views on adopting the effective tax rate?
Is that ever? Is that, the question is ever, would I ever?
Not yet.
Okay. As a general rule, no. I think we, as a city, have done a good job, and there are a lot of opportunities that we can do. 3.5% where it would trigger an election, correct? It would trigger election. That's a pretty massive increase to me. I, in fact, I think we can do more as a city to give our residents as far as peace of mind, as far as their property taxes go, in the sense of, we can look at increasing that exemption. We are very fortunate to, and I'm going to put it with a caveat, we are very fortunate to have continually rising values of our homes. Having said that, as far as a increased exemption from the 10% or the $10,000, I'm not going to say that in perpetuity. I would look at it at a time limit and then look at re-upping it. But as a rule, in my view, in my mind, it would be very hard to convince me to get to that point of the 3.5% where we have to go to the voters. That's still, for me, a massive increase. I mean, there are other options, and again, that's part of the reason why I'm okay lobbying at the state level. You know, we're punishing a lot of times our residents when we have all these residents from outside the state shopping here in Frisco, and we're not getting that money. So, I would propose looking at an increase that we could lobby for in the sales tax.
All right, and I may have missed it, I didn't hear your view on the effective tax rate, so let's add it and ask that one again, your view on the effective tax rate adoption?
So, so the effective tax rate right now, I think, is what, .446 to that, or that's, excuse me, the note.
Same thing.
Yeah. And that's part of it, as, trying to make sense of that, I understand they were simplified, but for me, as a resident, I still try, and I confused my sister trying to explain everything about it, but as the effective rate goes, whatever we can do to maintain that, I'm not going to say ever, but whatever we can do, because again, when I talk to the city departments, remember, these are people too, and I'm all about fiscal responsibility, but to ever say ever, you know, there are potential for a city that's going to grow to 300,000 people, you know, there's going to be a conversation, okay, what do you value more? Do you value fiscal responsibility, or do you value quality of service and the services that are offered in Frisco? So, as far as the effective, that's my goal to keep it the same, but I won't ever say ever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question five, I'm, I'm fighting off the urge to give parenthetical remarks, so. Question five, in the past year, several local municipalities passed ordinances instituting a mask mandate in light of COVID-19, some of which you may be familiar. Some of those required businesses to enforce the ordinance or risk fines. What's your view on such ordinances, and if appropriate, who should be responsible for enforcement?
Well, the governor made it clear recently, when he lifted the mask mandate, that Texans have mastered the steps to preventing getting COVID-19, and I would agree with the governor in that, and the interaction I've had with residents in Frisco is that they've followed that council. In fact, I feel like the bad one, because one time I went to Best Buy, and I was the only one without a mask, and I had to run back out to my car. So, the governor's made it clear that he has faith in the residents of Texas, and I tend to believe that too, and from what you've shown me as Frisco residents, I tend to believe that as well. So, I don't see a need to enforce a mask mandate, I don't see a need to enact one. I will give businesses the opportunity to make that decision and also be supportive of them, but it's not a mandate. And further, as far as the enforcement, I don't think we ever want to be in the enforcement business where we're saying, you can do this, you can do that, you can't do that. This has been exceptional times for, unprecedented times for the city of Frisco, and what we can do to educate those business owners or the people, I think, is the more appropriate action instead of just writing fines awilly-nilly. So, I, I trust, I trust you as a resident, I trust you as a citizen. I wore a mask, that's my commitment because I've chosen to protect myself and you, but you certainly have that option.
We're right on time, maybe a couple minutes ahead, so we have two more questions. Six, what is your greatest policy disagreement with your opponent?
Gosh, being here? I don't, I don't. If I, if I can just diverge a little bit, I do want to say this, that, you know, the decisions that are made in the city of Frisco, real quickly, they're not always easy, and we're going to have disagreements, and that's the purpose of the council. We are not in a monarchy, we are not in a religious oligarchy, we're going to have disagreements. But, you know, one of my, my points is that we can still have a constructive dialogue on, on what we want to be as a city. We, I want to be the city that welcomes my neighbor in and has them over for a barbecue. I want to be the city that also has events downtown and celebrates the diversity that we have within the city. So, in the minute or so that I have left with John, you know, he's obviously, has been on the council for many years, and for me, one thing that I look back on is Wade Park, or Lake Lebanon, as some people call it. And you run, it's challenging because there's the opportunity for a developer to come and build Frisco and jobs and add beauty. But when I look at the newspaper article about a year before Graham was even broken, when Stan Thomas says in that article, bankruptcy is your friend, I don't know that, that doesn't give me a chance to take a step back and not vote in favor of those tax incentives for that, even though they're performance-based, but in that aspect.
Almost. All right. And you addressed this a little bit in the past, this is the last question, then we'll go to a few lightning round questions. If you're, are you familiar with the Texas Rent Relief Program?
I am not.
So, I don't, I don't want, we may ask that question later, so it's just related to that. If you're familiar with the Texas Rent Relief Program, will it help or hinder responsible growth in Frisco? The idea, I think you understand the idea behind that, so just talk about as it relates to Frisco and apartments.
Well, again, I'm a renter, and so there's always one side of me. By the way, I should mention that, that I work for a regional airline, and if you know anything about regional airline pilot pay and how low it is, my job is much like that. So, I'm probably one of the more, let's call it moderately financed citizens as far as my salary goes. So, having said that, the concept of rent, it kills me because I come, I moved here from North Carolina after living here before, and I was just blown away at the rental rates. The goal behind renting is to provide somebody a space or safety. My concern is that if we provide rental relief, is that going to create an artificial ceiling for renters in the future? So, I want to be very cautious because cities do have the option to fund that program, but I want to be cautious on, on how it's addressed before we go one way or the other. Or, you know, for me as a renter, I certainly want to be living in Frisco, but we have to be cautious in what we do.
Thank you. Three quick, what we call lightning round questions.
All right, Derek.
And then we'll do a closing.
All right.
These are pretty straightforward. Have you failed to vote in any primary or general election in the last four years?
Yes. Yeah, I missed the, I missed the December runoff.
Will you commit to limiting the growth of the city's budget to the sum of inflation plus population?
No, I won't commit to that.
Do you support the authority of the city to expend public funds to lobby the legislature?
Yes.
Yes. And then this one's a little bit unique, so I'm, what I'm doing is asking you to self-identify your political philosophy. Would you briefly self-identify your political beliefs in preferably under three words? For example, Republican, Democrat, Independent, Conservative, Liberal, Socialist, Maoist, whatever you like.
None of the above. I'm an Independent.
Fair enough. Gotcha. All right. Thank you very much, and then if you would, give us a two-minute closing statement.
All right. Thank you very much, Derek, for your questions, I appreciate it. The biggest thing that I want to get across is I made the decision to run for City Council because that was my choice. Nobody ever came to me and said, I want you to do this, this is what you should do. That was my decision. The reason I made that choice is because I believe in Frisco, I like the city of Frisco. Obviously, I wouldn't say that if I didn't make the 35, 35-minute commute to and from Irving four days a week. So, I like Frisco, it reminds me of where I grew up as a kid, so it's very nostalgic for me. I grew up in the western suburbs of Chicago in a city called Naperville, right? And it had experienced exponential growth from 1980 to 1990, where we doubled from 40,000 to 80,000 people, and then again in 2,000 to 140,000 people. So, for me, it feels like home, and we had to address a lot of the same issues as far as exponential growth, protecting the citizens, quality of amenities, and transportation. So, with that said, I wanted to make the point that I can bring that experience to the table in one aspect. Another thing that I want to make sure that you, the voters, know is that I was a longtime journalist, and I bring that up because it is so important as a representative of the citizens to communicate with you, whether it be through Facebook, whether it be through forums, that's one of the most important things to me and one of the platforms. You know, I want to make sure, we can disagree, and that's fine, but I want to make sure that if I have a town hall, or if I have a forum, or if you come to City Hall, that you get to express that. So, that's my focus. Not only that, transportation, innovation, and continue to allow Frisco to grow and become not only a leader in Collin County, but across the region and nation.
Awesome. Give him a hand. Thank you, JP. As he heads off, we're going to ask the candidates for Council Place Three to join us on stage, and I think we have placards for them as well. Karen Cunningham, Sai Krishna, Angelina Pelham, and Dr. Jennifer White. Now, I'm told two of our four candidates for this race have chosen to join us tonight. As you can see, and Mr. Krishna, make sure I pronounce your first name properly.
Yeah, brother.
Sai?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you much. I think, I think it's pronounced Jennifer. Awesome. Okay. Well, you'll note that Karen Cunningham and Angelina Pelham were candidates in this race as well, and despite being invited two months ago, they did not attend, but we really appreciate you being here. So, we have some, some questions are the same, I've added some additional ones for you, and we have a couple of different lightning round questions. We'd love to start with Mr. Krishna in an opening statement of two minutes.
Thank you, I'm very delighted to be here tonight. My name is Sai Krishna. I came to this country in 2003 as a high school dropout kid. I got my education, everything started from community college. I love community college, that was my base. I got associate degree from my community college, community college in Allegheny County, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I moved from there. So, I've been, I'm a registered nurse, and I've been married for 16 years, having two kids, both are in Frisco IST. And I come from a family who built 100-beded hospital and donated to the community. So, that serving community is still in my, carrying in my genes, and I don't consider serving the community as my, as my full, as a job, instead I call, is as a calling passion. So... So being a nurse, having a BS in nursing, I have seen the life very closely, and also with a master's in business administration. And I've been in Frisco for three, almost like close to four years. I never saw one person, elected body, coming into my neighborhood and asking, what concerns do you have living in Frisco? That was the key why I started thinking about it, about the Frisco, and what we are getting, and what need to be done in Frisco. So that triggered me in, in my thoughts, and then I started, okay, we need to do something here. There is, things are not going in right direction. It's not taking the right path. So that was my decision to run for Frisco City Council. And tonight, I'm here, that's because to seek all your support here, who are here with your family, your friends, everybody to vote for me. Thank you very much.
Dr. White?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jennifer White, and I'm running for Frisco City Council Place Three. First of all, I'd like to thank the host for putting on this event. I'd also like to thank my family, who unfortunately could not attend tonight. It is so awesome to see so many supporters in the audience, and I'd like to thank you for all your prayers and your hard work and your support in my campaign. Frisco is a great place to live and raise a family. I've lived in Frisco for 17 years. I'm a wife, mother of three kids, and a veterinarian. As a political outsider, I will bring fresh ideas to Frisco City Council. I'm the only true conservative in the race, and I will focus on issues that are actually important to Frisco city residents. My political activism has led me to knock on thousands and thousands of doors, and I have gotten a good feel for what Frisco residents really care about. Overwhelmingly, those issues are lower taxes, reducing density, and prioritizing our public safety. My vision for Frisco is to spend your money wisely and have a balanced buddy, budget. The system, the system needs to be fiscally responsible. We can have nice things without overspending taxpayer money. Frisco is also growing from the suburban community that I moved to. I will lead the way to prevent Frisco from becoming like Dallas. I will also continue, I will also continue to support our first responders, make sure they are well compensated, and have everything they need to keep up our high standards. At my core, I am a principled conservative and a Christian. I believe in limited government, personal responsibility, and traditional family values. I will never sacrifice my values to get elected and re, or reelected. I am very proud of my conservative endorsements, people like Collin County Conservative Republicans, Collin County GOP, Sheriff Tracy Murphy, Fred Rogers, Ted Harts, and Ryan Williams.
Thank you very much. But you're up next, because you get the first question. So again, we'll start with the softball, go through these. What is the greatest need for the city, and how would you address it? Dr. White?
Is that me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
I don't think he pronounces his name that way.
The greatest need for Frisco is to support our first responders. I have a lot of respect for our first responders. My brother is actually a police officer, and I do think they do a great job. They put their life on the line every day. Currently, about half of the budget goes to fire and police. I want to make sure that we keep them well compensated and well staffed in order to keep our, in order to keep our city safe. I will never, I never vote to defund the police.
And before you answer, so I always like to be fair. Sometimes I'm informal, and I use first names or last names. My notes said Jennifer was a doctor. Your garb looks like you might be as well. I didn't want to offend and not refer to you as a doctor.
No, I'm a registered nurse.
A what?
I'm not a doctor. I'm a registered nurse.
Okay. Mr. Krishna, please, let me know if you want me to ask that question again.
Yeah, please.
What is the greatest need for the city, and how would you address it?
The greatest need in city today is we need a good listener representation in the city. Who can walk in our residents' shoes? Who can make a change? Who can be a good listener and act upon? That is what we need today in the city. We are lacking of it. Nobody cares. They put the signs on the streets, and they sit on the ivory tower, and limited people go to vote, and whatever they get it, they make a decisions. That is not right, in my answer.
Thank you very much. I'm going to add a question from the result of the last one. Past forums and even candidates on the stage earlier tonight have suggested that adopting an effective tax rate and having excellent services are counterintuitive, or they both can't be accomplished. Do you agree with that, and why or why not? So effective tax rate and excellent services essentially can't both happen?
No, I don't agree in increasing tax. We can do it what we have, and we can have an alternative to generate the tax revenue for the city, but not penalizing our residents. We are not here to sell our house. We are not here to sell our property. We are living in Frisco. We had to make our living in Frisco. We want to see our kids growing in Frisco. There is no point of increasing tax.
Thank you. Dr. White?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. So past candidates have talked about, they specifically suggested that adopting an effective tax rate and having excellent city services are essentially counterproductive or anathema. They don't go together. You can't accomplish both. Do you agree with that? Why are I, why or why not?
That's a really good question.
Thank you.
I believe that we can do both. I believe that the city currently has plenty of money. We do need to keep our taxes low. We need to control our budget. Most importantly, we need to spend our money wisely. We can have nice things in Frisco, but not everything needs to be the Taj Mahal. So yes, I believe that we can do both. Most importantly, we need to keep our taxes low.
And I believe, Dr. White, this next question goes to you. You were familiar with this from earlier. What is your stance regarding the city's role in promoting and supporting, promoting and supporting affordable housing?
Currently, one of the number-one concerns for the city of Frisco are the number of apartments that we have. As I talk to voters, nobody likes, that's the number-one concern. There was a recent article about, in the paper, that said that Frisco currently leads the nation in the number of apartments for the last five years. That is not something that Frisco wants to be known for. We have plenty of apartments now for affordable family housing, and I don't think we need anymore.
I am against the apartments as well, as Dr. Jennifer said, but, but I don't know whether, if there is any developers here, I'm really sorry. My apologies. I had to make this statement. That when it comes to city, if the developers, whoever, if they step forward to develop the city, we need to have stipulations to have a different, like, you know, different price tax houses need to be built or developed in that, I mean, they should have a plan. They should give a priority for like, you know, starting with 250,000 or 300,000 or 350. Not every, every house should be above 500 or 600. We want our kids, who, who is going to be, like, starting their life, they have to have their own house. They need to start it at somewhere they need to start. That means I don't want all our residents or our future generation leave their life throughout, throughout their life in apartments. I don't want that because they can't afford. We want affordable housing with various price tags, starting with, from the lawyer to the higher level. We need to have a mix it. That's my priority.
Thank you. Dr. White? Is it that same question? Do you believe he started that one? Oh, see, I didn't write it in my notes. Well, you had a second chance at that one. I apologize. So the next question goes to Mr. Krishna. You start? And we, you'd heard this before. It's two parts. Will you commit to opposing any proposed budget that is above the effective tax rate plus inflation? And what's your views on adopting the effective tax rate?
As I said earlier, I don't want to rise the tax. Keep the budget within what we have. It is just like our house budget. If we overstretch, what's going to happen? We are going to be adept. The same thing in the city. When you are making a decisions, when you want to plan it, we cannot just make a decision on a projection. Projection can always have a failure, possibilities of failure as well. We need to have a constant flowing of a cash inflow to the city. That's what I always look at it. When you're making, we need to learn to prioritize things, whether it is a need or is it a want. This is what my mom and my dad and my grandpa taught me to prioritize. If I don't prioritize, I can be anywhere, not here today. I could have been somewhere on the street. That's what I can tell you. Budgeting is very, very critical, and we had to spend very wisely.
Thank you. Dr. White?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Would you commit to opposing any proposed budget that is above the effective tax rate plus inflation? And what are your views on adopting the effective tax rate?
Yes. Taxes are one of the number-one concerns for our Frisco city residents. We need to keep taxes low. We also need to focus on controlling the budget. Our spending right now is currently out of control. My plan is to make sure, and I'll go through the budget, make sure that we spend our money wisely on things that we need. Like I said, we don't need to spend money, we could have nice things, but we don't need to spend our money on unnecessary things. Not everything in Frisco needs to be like the Taj Mahal. In my personal life, I have, my family follows the Dave Ramsey Plan, and I think we need to put Frisco on the Dave Ramsey Plan.
Thank you very much. Apparently, we have some Dave Ramsey fans in the audience here. And the next question, I believe, goes to Dr. White. This is question five. This is from earlier as well. As you may have seen, in local municipalities, they pass ordinances regarding the mask mandate in light of COVID-19. Some of them required the businesses to actually enforce those mandates or risk fines. What is your view on such ordinances? You don't have to restrict it just to mask mandates, but that's the question. What are, what is your view on such ordinances, and who should be responsible for enforcement, if any?
I am not a big mask fan. I do not like the mask on me, and I do not like it on you. I don't believe that the government has any right to enforce mask mandates. I believe it's a civil liberty issue. If a business wants to force mask mandates or for us to wear a mask, then I think that we also have the opportunity to not shop at that business. The government should not enforce a mask mandate.
Thank you. Mr. Krishna?
I leave it to each, I mean, individual, their decision. If they want to use, they can use it. If they don't want to use it, they can, they don't.
And then, thank you very much. So a new question that the previous candidates didn't have. Understanding eminent domain is obviously constitutional with certain parameters. What would your policy be in using eminent domain in Frisco? What would your policy be in using eminent domain in Frisco? Mr. Krishna? So, and I give some parenthetical remarks for the crowd. A lot of times when I ask about eminent domain, people say, well, it's constitutional. Yeah, I know that. Given that eminent domain is constitutional for a government, what is your view on how it should be used as a council member? What is your view on using eminent domain as a council member on private property here in Frisco?
We have to respect the constitution as a citizens. And I do respect the family, I mean, the landowners' rights as well at the same time.
Well, that's for them to decide.
Did I answer your question?
All right.
No? No, I do respect, I mean, that's what I said. I respect the landowners' rights, and also, as a citizen, I respect the constitution. Whatever the constitution has made, that made for a reason. So we have to obey that. That is my answer.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. White?
Would you repeat the question?
Certainly. Understanding eminent domain is constitutional with certain parameters. What would your policy be in using eminent domain in Frisco?
We need to be careful in taking private property away from citizens. I believe that eminent domain should only be used in certain, certain situations, like maybe a hospital or for fire stations. But we need to respect people's right to have their own property.
Thank you very much. We are going to have closing statements, but first, we have four lightning round questions. You know how those work from previous. Simply going to ask you a question. You're going to say yes, no, or pass. What we'll try to do is maybe start the first two with you, the next two with you. We'll just say, go down the row. So I'll ask you a question, and you can give your response, yes, no, or pass. Do you personally believe your opponent is qualified for this position?
That's a great, that's a great question.
Nope, nope, nope. Yes, no, or pass. I'm sorry. You can talk to the people, but it's a straightforward question. Yes, no, or pass.
I'll pass this.
Yes, sir.
No.
Question two to Mr. Krishna. Have you failed to vote in any primary or general election in the last four years? Yes, no, or pass?
I think I did, yes.
Yes.
Question three. We'll switch over, go to Dr. White. Do you support the authority of the city to expend public funds to lobby the legislature?
No.
No.
Thank you. And again to you. Would you pursue and promote an effective tax rate each budget cycle, your own council?
Yes.
One more time, repeat that.
Certainly. Would you pursue and promote an effective tax rate in each budget cycle, your own council?
Yeah, yes.
Excellent. Thank you for playing. And with that, I believe my notes say, Mr. Krishna, you started with your statement. So Dr. White, if you would make your closing statement of two minutes, and then Mr. Krishna will close us out. Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here, and thank you for the opportunity to share and listen to my vision for the city of Frisco. My top priorities are to listen to what Frisco residents actually want, things like lower taxes, reducing density, and prioritizing our public safety. These are the issues that Frisco residents actually care about. I want to represent the voice of the people, businesses, and first responders. I will never let being elected change who I am or what I believe, but rather, I will always do my best to be a bold conservative and stand up for Frisco family values.
Thank you for everyone today, listening all over, I mean, asking our questions and listening our answers as well. I'm very delighted, I'm very excited to serve Frisco as a councilman in the next upcoming, you know, city. There are a couple priorities for me right now. We have an excite battery plant technology area which city is planning to throw amenities, and they are waiting for $100 million to come into their account and throw the amenities. But for me, community health is most important. Our next generation is most important because the lead contamination, as you all know, it is very, very crucial, and it can ruin our next generation. So if somebody's mistake or somebody's negligence, we can all, we all have to pay taxes. So please make a wise decision. I want to put a break there. I want to be opposed. I want to make sure every process is, I mean, follow the process and do good thing, and there should not be any conflict of interest for somebody who is in the council body who's getting, like, their family members getting the contract or doing these things. So I am very, very, I mean, very, very serious on this issue. If something goes bad, I mean, whole community is going to pay off, has to pay the toll. So that's my top priority. So, that's my top priority. So, please support me. And second thing, I mean, budgeting as a cost-cutting, I'm very, very straightforward. I don't want to spend unnecessary money on wasteful. I want to prioritize things. So, I'm going to do that, and I'm going to bring everything to the residential level in the neighborhood. Every week, I will be in the neighborhood once a week, and in all, I'm going to travel all the Frisco, throughout the Frisco, and I will meet everybody, and I'm going to bring the city to your doors. So, please support me. We will make a change. We will bring the best of Frisco. It's not just a best city in the nation, it's a healthy city as well. That's what my challenge is, and I'm going to bring it, I'm going to make it happen. If you all...
Thank you very much. Well done in keeping with the times. Give them a round of applause as they exit the stage. ISD places, ISD place six and ISD place seven. If my records serve me, no one decided to show on ISD place six. So, ISD place seven, there are two candidates in this race. Evelyn Brooks... And Renee Archibald. Oh, it looks like Renee did not show up. Evelyn, thank you so much for joining us. You have the stage.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you, RC3 Pastor Burden, for this opportunity tonight and for allowing us to have this in your beautiful church. I am Evelyn Brooks, an ordinary educator. To Brian, I'm the wife of 18 years. To Ashlyn and Brianna, I am mom. To Charles and Sally Bowman, I'm daughter. And to my students, I'm Mrs. Brooks. Good evening. I'm proud to say that I homeschool my children. I offer them individualized instruction, using the best teaching practices and curriculum choices, excelling in excellence and with enforced accountability. I want to bring the same principles to students in the Frisco ISD, using the same standards and qualities of education that I have given to my own daughters and previous students I've taught in the past. Just a little bit about my experience and my qualifications. I've spent most of my life in the field of education, some 20 years plus. Currently, I serve on the board of Waterford Falls HOA, Children's Course of Collin County. I'm an advisor for Bowman Second Chance for Change, and I also sit on the board of my own nonprofit organization, International Rock of Faith, where I serve underprivileged children and their parents in Kapua, a small community in Port-au-Prince, Haiti. I serve, I like to volunteer in the summer times. I've offered STEM science programs for students in the, or for children in the community, where I've shared the gospel. I also serve in church. I founded a small homeschool program, Challenging Edge Academy, where I served elite athletes in Frisco, giving them the opportunity to have an accelerated curriculum for a few hours. Just to give you a little bit about myself, my time is ending. I currently serve as a midweek instructor for Prestonwood Baptist Church, and it's an honor to be here this evening.
So, I have seven questions for you tonight. The stage is all yours. We'll start with the easy one, and it's a little obviously different because this is an ISD, different than the city council, and then, of course, we're going to have a lightning round at the end. What do you think the greatest need is facing the school district, and how would you address it?
The greatest need is definitely to create an environment for learning. During 2020, our children experienced very traumatic experiences. Unexpectedly, they had to leave school, and everyone was homeschooled, as a matter of fact. Along with this, we have a lot of political issues that are currently happening in society that have also been imposed on our young people and are at the threshold of coming into our schools. So, I think just differentiating the difference between creating an environment for learning versus creating an environment for political division is something that we need to define and prevent.
Thank you. Second question. What is your position on school vouchers? And how would you advocate your position to the state legislature or legislator, if at all?
I believe in school choice. It's good for us. It allows, it holds districts accountable for teaching our children with excellence and listening to the opinions and the values of families they serve. So, as far as what I would do for legislature, I would, actually, I would corral parents together. I would ask parents to become witnesses. I would ask parents to give their testimonies of how they would utilize a voucher and how that would improve the quality of their child's education. So, I wouldn't go in as a Lone Ranger, but I definitely would support parents' decisions to choose, and we would come together and come up with a strategy to present in order to promote student vouchers.
Thank you. Question three. What should the policy be regarding self-identified transgender students, use of bathrooms, shower facilities, and sports participation? I missed a word. Let me just read that one more time. What is and should be the policy regarding self-identified transgender students, use of bathrooms, shower facilities, and sports participations, and why?
Yes, it's unsafe for boys to be in the girls' restrooms or locker rooms. It's unsafe for our girls. And we can respectfully accept everyone in school. Everyone can belong in the school environment. However, we don't want to impose on the safety of our young girls. So, I am against boys in locker rooms as well as bathrooms. There should be individual bathrooms to accommodate them. And as far as sports, boys and girls, we're physically, we're different physiologically, biologically, and we have to remain true to those values. So, boys should participate with boys' sports and as well as female sports. And I'll say this too, after working with elite athletes who spend up to six hours a day training, young girls I've taught, to see their dreams slip away because they're competing against a male who's stronger than they, I think that's shameful of us to even contemplate.
Thank you. Question four. How can the FISD provide protection to students who face the threat of bullying on campus? As you know, this has been a national issue and certainly locally. How can the FISD provide protection to students who face the threat of bullying on campuses?
I think we need to have a zero tolerance for bullying. I think we need to, when we see issues arise, as opposed to the district hiding that or covering it up, it needs to be a collaboration with community members. Parents need to be notified as soon as possible, and there needs to be serious consequences. So, it's a serious issue, and it's not one that should be covered, which is something that I've seen as a history that the FISD has done. So, first, parents need to be notified immediately, both sides. There needs to be some sort of strategy in place. But again, it's a climate that we provide for students. What is the climate? What is the expectation? And a lot of that is also dependent on a teacher as well. Teachers should be given the proper professional training as well to identify bullying in their classrooms and to also alert administrators, principals, and parents immediately when they see things as well.
Do you support merit pay for teachers? Why or not? You can add your other philosophy on teacher pay as it's appropriate.
Yes. You know, as teachers, many of us, we have to work part-time jobs, just to subsidize our income. It's a sacrifice, and it's one that most of us willingly accept. So, I am for merit pay. I'm for any kind of pay that will increase a teacher's salary. And it also encourages and challenges teachers to work collaboratively together in order to ensure that all their students are successful. So, it is, it is good, it is accountability, it's enforced accountability, and it also promotes our teachers who are doing a good job. So, yes, I also benefited from that as a teacher while working actually in Denver Public Schools. We were a pilot program, and I, you know, was able to support my colleagues, my colleagues who worked with the first graders with me in a positive way. I was able to coach them. We were able to plot where the kids were. We were able to use alternative assessments, and we were really able to be a part of that accountability system because it's motivation. So, I support merit.
Do you support the authority of the ISD to expend public funds to lobby the legislature? Why or why not?
I do not. That's not what we use our hard-earned money for, and it could quickly develop into something out of control, and who knows if we agree with the values or whatever they're lobbying against or for. So, I do not support that.
And the last question before our lightning round, this has been a national issue and certainly a state issue. It's controversial. So, I wanted to ask if you would share your opinion on critical race theory and explain why it should or should not be a part of FISD curriculum or how it impacts curriculum? So, I'll read that again. Share your opinion on critical race theory and explain why it should or should not be a part of FISD curriculum or how it impacts curriculum?
So, again, we are in the business of teaching. We are in the business of making sure that all of our students can compete globally. As a matter of fact, the world has actually come to America. There is a bridge now, and it's harder for our students to compete, and that is the environment that we create. We create an environment for learning. When a child comes to school, they need love, they need truth, and a sense of belonging. As far as social issues and theories are concerned, sure, that is important, and it does have a place. And that place is at home, where parents can explain it, where parents can use their family values, and it is not something that should be incorporated in our school system.
Thank you. All right. We have, I believe, six, what we call lightning round questions. Again, straightforward, yes, no, or pass questions. I'm sure they'd be delighted to hear additional information from you after...
Okay, yes or no? Okay, I'll listen.
There we go. Awesome. All right. Question one. Do you support the right of teachers to voluntarily be trained and armed at school?
Yes.
Will you oppose any budget that is more than 2.5% annual increase? That's the state trigger.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you believe that school, this is a little more complicated, but you're in this industry, you understand this. Do you believe that school bonds should be broken up into grouped categories the way some city bonds are divided up?
Yes, I do.
That's an important question, for those paying attention. You should talk to her about that. Should FISD elections allow for ballot declarations of party affiliation or independent status?
I do not agree with that, no. I think it should remain unpartisan.
Two more. Would you support and pursue an effective tax rate each budget cycle?
An effective?
Effective, no new tax rate, effective tax rate, yes, no, or pass?
Pass.
Do you believe your opponent is qualified for this position?
No.
A strong close, and if you would, give us your two-minute closing statement.
Thank you. I've shared this story with several people I've met. When my little girls were about eight and nine years old, we took a journey, and we called it our African-American Heritage Journey. We journeyed through the South and Southeast states, and on this journey, I mean, we sat at the Woolsworth Counter in Greensboro, North Carolina, where they did the sit-in. We walked across the bridge, the Edmund Pettus Bridge, where Martin Luther King led a protest so that blacks could have the rights to vote. And we ended our field trip, three-week field trip, in Washington, DC, saw the Smithsonian, and we ended at the United States Capitol. Once we got home and we debriefed on our trip, we came to the conclusion that we traveled not on our African-American National Heritage or Heritage Journey, but rather, we traveled on our American Heritage Journey. I believe now, more than ever, it's important that we remain true to the foundation of this country. For almost 250 years, it has sustained us. It has sustained our society. We have laws, we have liberties, we have freedom that many countries do not have the opportunity to have. So, therefore, I believe it's important that we remain true to what our education system is supposed to be. I believe in promoting the Texas Education, Texas Code. With it, inside of it, it has the mission for education. Our mission is to make sure that our kids are prepared to not only compete globally, but to be successful and thriving human beings who have self-respect, respect for others, and respect for differences and different opinions. I'm here so that I can be a sound of reason to keep out what does not belong inside of the learning environment and to remain true to what we're in the business of teaching. Thank you.